Oh, Barbara, good morning. Just printed out this thing. I'm trying to understand why I'm signing this letter, but now I don't understand. So anyway, good morning, everyone. We'll get started at eight thirty four on. Tuesday, June seventh. This is the regular meeting of the town in New Canaan Board of Selectmen. Eight thirty four AM. It's a hybrid meeting. So there are some. People on the by zoom. First item on our agenda is the ministry. Actually, I want to amend the agenda to move up item number. Fifteen. To immediately after the. Right after the contract amendment number three, and I'd like to move up the emergency management director. Appointment as well, so that we before we get into.
Second, second.
All favor. Hi, okay, so first item on the agenda is the minutes from our prior meeting. Any comments or corrections? I move recruitment. All favor. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide. Comments to the board of selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address, B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov, and we will read them. In the course or prior to the end of the meeting. Also, people can give comments. Is anybody on for comments? On zoom? We receive one comment, which I'll mention later. Jack mode, you want it?
If anybody online wants to to make a comment, they should raise their virtual hand.
Okay, but Jack is here in person. I'd like to make a comment. Limits of three minutes, Jack. You want to stand over the podium? Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, you know what? Sorry, we don't have a podium set up. I'm sorry, Jack.
Thanks for the time. I shot you guys a note. This is about the regional affordable housing plan, the New Canaan portion, which I think is on the agenda. I just wanted to highlight a couple items which I think are relevant for community discussion. First thing is, I think the document should really talk about where we want this the town to be in ten or twenty years. We talk about we don't have appropriate housing today, but what is actually the long term steady state? Desire for a number of apartments, single family homes, economic distribution, age distribution and the like. Otherwise, we're just moving in in a bit of a void here. And I think it is relevant. Number two is, I think we've we're moving away from moratoriums as a as a key expectation, and I understand that. I think there should be a discussion with the real estate broker community, because now we're about one year without a moratorium coverage. How do we present ourselves as a town when it comes to zoning for new residents? What kind of liability do brokers have with regards to knowledge about the zoning issues with regards to eight thirty G? That's relevant, frankly, for everybody in town. Number three is the data. The American Community Survey data is used extensively in this document. That is a survey material, which I think only covers about one percent of the Connecticut population. So I think we should understand how relevant is that to New Canaan? Which is quite a unique subset, because that data is used to extrapolate shortages or other things for the town, which is indicating. We should do things and how comfortable are we for that? Number four is strategies for twenty twenty two. So this is and beyond essentially. This is just an opinion, but my view on that outline is we're really not going to make a whole lot of progress. It looks to me a lot of. Restatement of previous strategies, which I think have been challenged. We've talked about where some things fell through the gaps. And number. Or five, the issue about community engagement and how do we get more engagement? I think one thing that would easily up the discussion is having P and Z elected. Just like we do in other towns of our size, that would create a dialogue in the town, which would allow us to actually get feedback from people. With regards to what do they want? I don't think we should be afraid of the voters. I think it's it works fairly effectively in other places. Again, if my understanding is correct, it's only New Canaan, Greenwich, Stanford, Norwalk and Bridgeport that have appointed P and Z. So. That's something that could come up for the next charter renewal and probably a general discussion. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else present here wants to make comment? Anybody online? She's not present. We have one email comment, which when we get to that discussion, we can read that comment. Okay, moving on. That's why Barbara's here. Good morning, Barb. Contract. Amendment to the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood. Our agreement about operating our daycare center. You want to come up for a second? Because I when I saw this on the agenda, I forgot why I signed the agreement. So perhaps you could explain. We operate a daycare center, which. Which receives states' funds and and.
Good morning.
Our longtime.
Long time. Yes. And this is Sue Powers, who is the center's bookkeeper, office manager. She's who does everything. So. Because it's dealing with numbers. That's why Sue is here.
It's not often we have the daycare folks coming to talk to us, but.
No, I don't think we've ever been here, to be honest.
Okay, well.
No, but we're here today because the Office of Early Childhood, well, the town and the Office of Early Childhood. Have a contract and that contract provides the daycare center with a grant, and that grant allows us to provide. Tuition for thirty six families on a sliding scale. We have ninety children and now the ninety children, thirty six families pay tuition on a sliding scale based on family size and income. So the Office of Early Childhood, our contract is due to expire at the end of June. It's a two year contract. And they're asking for they would like to provide us with a cost of living increase. Last year's was nineteen hundred. And this year it would be a little over nine thousand dollars. And it has to be signed and executed by prior to the end of this month.
And I think I've already signed it, but that's why I ran to understand why I signed it, because they wanted to write back. So. This is an amendment.
Yes, it's an amendment to the existing contract.
Okay, questions for.
How long have we had this? School essentially for ninety children? Is that is there a big demand for?
Nineteen seventy two.
The daycare has been there fifty years.
Okay, and the demand it currently is.
It's starting to pick up again. You know, after the pandemic, it really was very slow for a long time. We're back up to about eighty eighty five children now. We'll be back to ninety come fall.
Great, and that's and that's your capacity is not.
Is our capacity.
And this is the first time. I think folks have come have been doing this for eleven years. This is.
I'm the CEO of the daycare center, so I try to pay attention. Barbara and I meet once.
We do town council a lot for the contracts, but this is the first time we've been here.
Were you in the schoolhouse apartments building before the schoolhouse apartments were were?
Yes, we were. We were there for a very long time.
Where the Board of Education used to be.
Yeah, we used to occupy the bottom level of that building, and then we moved to the high school for two years. From the high school to East School, then East School back to where we are.
Okay. Well, great. So I move we approve this contract amendment. Or as presented in our tablets, just explained by Barb. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Further discussion on here. All in favor? Hi, thank you very much. Okay, that brings.
Yeah, likewise.
That brings us to, you know, since the affordable housing plan is going to be a little. More extended discussion. I suggest we run through our agenda and come back to that. Before we break for the executive session. So next on the agenda is. Before we get to the emergency management position, I would move up the appointment. Of Christie Bonner to the as an alternate on the zoning. Board of Appeals for a two year term ending December one, two thousand twenty three. I think Christie joined us by plan two.
I did. I'm I'm on video. Sort of, I guess, just audio.
Okay, good morning. So. Christie has been put forth by the chairman of the Z B A. Laura Edmonds and. If you have any questions for Christie, otherwise I have any question.
I just wanted to. Hi, Christie. We had a chance to chat yesterday, so thank you for that opportunity and welcome, and I appreciate. Sort of your diligence and looking into the role as as alternate of Z B A. So thank you for your interest, and I'm glad that Laura was able to recommend you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I would note that Christie's a lawyer for General Electric for.
And just to be clear. Just to be clear, I'm not actually practicing law for G E.
Okay, all right, but she her background is as a lawyer. I P field.
Yes.
Or impress a resume. So thank you for being willing to serve.
Just one question. Who is she replacing?
Ben. And Bill, Ben Bonis, Ben Bielis dropped off.
Cynthia Duel moved down.
Cynthia became a regular, so it's. Right, right, right. And. Christie is an unaffiliated voter, so. No further questions. I move we approve the appointment of. Christie Bonner to the Z B A. Second.
I'll second.
For the discussion on your all in favor? Hi, thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we come to the appointment of Russ Kimes as our full time emergency management director. Russ, you want to come down? We have the fire chief here. Albie, thank you for joining us. We have Peter Bergen representing, sir, I suppose, and. Thank you. And we also have a letter from. From Bonnie, which is terrific. So a little background. You know. Safety is so much in the news these days. And I experienced it with on Easter Sunday morning when I was taken by ambulance to the. The hospital with a stroke. It's critical that we have all of our first responders and our emergency service people be. On the top of their form and and available and. We've been talking for a while with Russ. Russ is a third generation native of of New Canaan, former military officer. Has been involved with our fire company number one for. Twenty four years. Four years. He's been serving as our part time. Emergency Management Director since two thousand twenty. August or September.
It was August thereabouts.
And and we and our discussion was along the lines of. You know, hard time volunteer. Jobs become full time jobs, and we we were struggling with how much. Both Russ and Phil had to dedicate to to do in the E M D role. And because there's a lot of preparation, a lot of writing of plans, a lot of drilling, a lot of training. Not only for. Certain or emergencies. And for the emergency management service with our ambulances, but the fire volunteers and the fire company and the police. So to me, it made a lot of sense to upgrade this position. Other towns. Around us were recruiting. I was very much concerned that Russ might get recruited by someone. Russ has been in the private sector with Morgan Stanley. He's. Suppose we haven't. And. He's deciding to change his his career. And dedicate his his expertise and talents to the town of New Canaan, so. Any questions for us? I think we all know Russ well.
We all do. We're lucky to know you well, Russ. Thank you for that. I my questions have more to do with sort of the structure and and the position and compensation and so forth, not anything to do with you, Russ. You're more than qualified, so. Whenever it's appropriate.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Cheryl, this is mainly for you, I guess. It's just so we were obviously proving. Did we set a a comp structure for this particular position?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and how was that commensurate with other similar positions in other towns?
It's commensurate with other towns, and also we looked at where our department heads fall years of experience, and we have placed him within that structure.
Okay, right. And then is there some savings from the position that you currently hold in terms of is there? That's are we still keeping that position open for the part time person or that?
Phil will remain part time.
Okay.
And. We get a stipend from the. Region one.
From Regis One Demos.
Their federal federal dollars actually they're they're sent down to support. Emergency Management Director positions. And.
So that will be applicable to the full time position now. Okay. Okay, great.
I mean, I can't. We can't be penny wise and pump foolish when it comes to safety here, so.
Yeah, I mean, ju- just just look in the look in the press and look at what's happened in this country in the last. Two years between pandemics and shootings and this and that, and I think this is this makes eminent sense. Going forward. You're gonna you're gonna still have a role at the fire department?
Yes, my intention is to stay on as a volunteer assistant chief. But obviously, my full focus is on the protection, the planning and the training for our first responders and civil defense corps like sir. To position our town as best as we can be prepared for whatever might come our way.
And you're going to have a role in FEMA reimbursements?
Yes, that's a big part of it is going to be the FEMA reimbursements. I'm sure Bill Osman will be very happy to.
Again, I've 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 seen, you know, the binder that's like this big.
And recruitment and retention is a big one.
Right.
Great. Where's your office going to be?
Good question. I don't know yet.
We'll figure that out.
Wherever they send me, I will be very happy.
Okay.
You're gonna start, I think, July one?
July five, technically. July one, July five.
Right. Another element of this is the the recruitment of volunteers, both for for all of our. Because, you know, we we've done a great job with volunteers. Especially with the ambulance corps, which is my heroes and. To maintain that, you really have to be constantly be be and and the volunteer organizations do a great job. As Peter knows and Stuart Sawavini, I mean, you know, to get people to volunteer their time, especially in emergencies, when it takes, you know, you're worrying about your own family, but to be out there and. And again, the ambulance corps just needs continue recruitment and to staff that seven twenty four seven three sixty five. So Russ is going to help with that effort and. To continue to maintain.
And as we move toward hopefully a new police station, presumably we'll have. Any O C. Component there. And I think it's important that we. We include that incorporate that into.
That's in the plan. There's a community room, E O C room.
Yeah.
In the plans for the South Avenue renovation.
Right.
Russ, how many storms have you overseen in the last two years?
Well, last two years, we had Irene, Henri, we had the flooding, the unbelievable flooding event that we had. The second half of the pandemic. So we've stood up the U C a number of times. And unfortunately, the they're forecasting for above average hurricane season this knock on wood, that will not be the case. We will be prepared.
And then I'll be I'll be developed a great relationship with obviously, you know, terrific new chief for the town of New Canaan, and we really appreciate all his efforts. And he has a great relationship with Russ, so I don't think we could be more happy with this point. If no further questions, I would move we approve the appointment of Russ Kimes, third, as full time emergency management director.
Second here.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Go call your employer. Forgot. Okay. That brings us to. Again, we'll come back to the affordable housing discussion. Item number six, A Ds. Who's bringing forth John Howe? Good morning.
Well, I figure maybe we can give it to Russ already. So we have we have a number of A Ds around town. Norwalk Hospital provides us with quite a few, but these are six that the town has mainly rec department type things. We have them. You know, paddle hot pool, Lapham Senior Center, Waveney House, Qantas Park and into me park concession stand. So these are ones that have been owned by the town, and we want to replace those. You can't even get batteries for them anymore.
They have shelf life?
They do have a shelf life, and it's come to its end of their shelf life, so we want to get the order placed. The funds for these are available. And we'd like to make the purchase and get the order placed.
Sounds like a wise move. Okay, any questions?
Just a question. What's the project's film fund?
Project Film Fund is is money that comes in when Waveney is rented. You know, like they're going to be filming out in the field.
I see.
Next week, things like that.
Okay, and and how big is that fund? Are we sixteen thousand out of that fund? Is that clearing it out?
Isn't a no, it does not clear it out.
Okay.
Off, and I don't know how much is in there.
Forty thousand about. Okay. Okay, great. Seems reasonable. So, yeah.
So we didn't budget for these, but they're.
These were not budgeted. There's there's talk that Norwalk Hospital Hospital might discontinue theirs. I've got phone calls into them to see. They're seasonal. They're outdoor ones, so they have to be pulled in the winter time, which because of battery and cold and everything else, but. It it might go into the capital budget because there's fifteen or sixteen locations for those.
Oh, okay. For the questions?
Sorry, how long do these last?
Five to ten years. These are these are at the ten year mark. It depends on, like any technology, it's changing as it goes along. So some of them, the batteries last a little while. Some of them now, the batteries last for the life. It a lot depends. So we should be able to get ten years without any problem out of these, except the disposable part, the pads. That those need to be changed.
Great.
Questions? I suppose these were part of the recreation side of the.
These were part of the recreation side, yes.
Opposed to the park side, so John is learning more and more both sides of the. And I want to congratulate you on your very successful dedication of the pool last Saturday morning.
Thank you.
I think you did great, great work. I move we approve this request from Parks and Recreation interim director to approve a purchase of six A Ds at a cost of sixteen thousand twenty dollars to be placed at several locations as described by John. Second?
Second.
For the discussion. On paper.
Hi.
Thank you, John. Hey. Albie, you got two items coming up. Good morning again.
Good morning, all.
Morning.
So number. Seven, request for personal protective equipment. That's three, three sets of firefighting gear for ten thousand dollars, six hundred twenty one out of our capital fund. These are actually three sets for volunteers that. Finish their probation and are now. Interior firefighters. The gear that they're using now was over ten years old. So there's a ten year old requirement with the National Fire Protection Association. And they were not issued their own gear yet. That was gear that was handed handed down. So the request is for three sets for to ten thousand six twenty one.
So this is a good story, right, Albie? And this is a good story because we've got new volleys.
We have, yes, and that the cost of doing business, unfortunately, yeah, we're getting new people in. They're finishing their minimum requirements, and we're getting them a quick equipped to.
What's the capacity in terms of numbers for the volleys?
And we have roughly twenty on the roster.
What's the ideal? What what's the target?
I'll take as many as we can, but yeah, the the better, the bigger the organization, the better. We haven't looked at a maximum yet as far as what we can handle.
Do we know what the maximum has been in the past? Just.
They've had up to in the forties to fifty range, you know, when it was less career staff and more the volunteer, more of the company, people living in town. So it's been a lot higher.
So you you want to continue, and I see, you know, Russ is still here. He he guess he made his phone call.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's it's definitely a benefit to to the town to have the volunteers, and in order to have them, you know, we need to equip them, keep them safe. And, you know, show that that a little bit of appreciation, even though it's work clothes, it is appreciation for them to have new gear.
Yeah, I think I think they deserve that, so.
And unfortunately, you know, the the requirements to have them have reasonably new gear to also, and that's even with the career staff. It's just this time it's the it's three sets for the volunteers.
Will other volunteers become eligible for this as they go through a certain level of training? So this is maybe the first three, and then we have seventeen more.
Yeah, so it's the department's done well on. Equipment people keeping them within gear that's less than ten years old. It just so happens that. These three did not have issued gear yet, and they were using hand me down gear. The other volunteers that are already certified interior firefighters are in the process in that ten year window. That they're just going to come up on schedule eventually.
Okay.
You know, the next major gear person, I wouldn't say major, but would be two thousand, two thousand twenty four. We have gear coming up on ten years. So I guess about a year and a half. Before we have to really buy. Some sets for the career side.
Thank you.
Albert, do you want to address the next item? Is the breathing apparatus for these volunteers or for everyone?
The S C B A is for everybody. These are just spare cylinders, replacement cylinders, I should say, for our S C B A breathing apparatus. They have a fifteen year D O T requirement and N F P A requirement. So they're July, they're coming up on their fifteen years of service. We're not. We're not supposed to fill them anymore with high pressure air, so they have to be decommissioned. So it's just. Our air, you know, our set S C B A is at fifteen years now. Probably looking for replacement of that in the next five years, but in order to maintain the number of cylinders we need for fires to have one on their S C B A and then a replacement. Before we have to go back to the firehouse and fill them, we need to replace those ones that are expiring. So it's just, yeah, it's just a D O T requirement.
How many are covered for this?
Unfortunately, this only this is seven. This, we were able to buy seven cylinders, what we had scheduled for a capital replacement. And I hate to blame the last couple of years inflation, but, you know, we went, you know, we might have lost one or two as far as price increases, but, yeah, this is seven cylinders. To replace.
So I recently brought my propane tank to Wheaton Dairy, and they have an expiration of ten years.
Yes, yep.
I didn't realize that. Now I'm beginning to understand. I mean, these things could be unsafe at a certain age.
Are they dated? Do you know how old they are?
Yep, they have a stamp on them. And the good, I mean, they don't get tested, so propane tanks, they won't test your. So ours get tested on a five year annual basis. They have to go out for testing, so that's why they give them fifteen years.
Okay, interesting. For the questions, no further questions? I move we approve both of these items. First, the personal protective equipment for ten thousand six twenty one oh seven is described by Albie. And secondly, the breathing apparatus cylinders for eleven thousand one fourteen, as described by Albie. Have a second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Hi.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Albie. Thank you. The man is here. My tiger.
Really?
Roads.
Yes, that'd be item number one. So given the fact that. Pura came in with a new determination as far as. How long EverSource has to put people onto contract? They have ninety days to put everyone back on the contract. We're feeling that the moratorium that we had on a four year basis or three year basis for them and the extension that we gave them. People necessarily, if they haven't signed up yet, they're not going to be able to.
For how long? How long? Two years? Three years?
We had, well, we had the three year moratorium, right, for, you know, waiting for them to sign up, and then we gave them the extra year for COVID. You know, at that point in time, this portion of Main Street and Park Street would have been slated to do in twenty twenty three, given the fact that now. Everyone's probably signed up. That's going to be signing up, or the new regulation is saying that they've got to sign up within ninety days. If you haven't already put it into works, you're probably not going to. So I think it's in our best interest to move forward these two roads, since they're our most heavily traveled roads and pave them.
So so Tiger, when does the ninety days expire?
When did Pura come up with that? Month or so ago.
Yeah, we're about six weeks into the ninety days.
So if you haven't you haven't signed up, you can't get it done.
Probably not.
For how many years? Two years?
We're not going to. We won't keep a moratorium for ourselves. If if someone wants to have gas and come back in again and sign up, we'll allow them to come in and sign up. The thought is that. At that point in time, I can have the trench repaved with our contractor at their cost, and the road will be in very, very good shape, if you follow me. We've been waiting four years for people to sign up. They haven't signed up, and now with this regulation that they've got ninety days to do it, or the cost is borne by the homeowner, not by EverSource anymore. EverSource was bearing the cost of the of the road excavation and the permitting. It's not that way anymore. So the feeling.
So this is a good thing. I mean, you you get four years to sign up. If you haven't signed up, you know, you own it. You you pay for it.
Right, and we can still wait to do some of the lesser roads, like, you know, the the. The roads that we had planned to do in twenty twenty three, you know, to wait, wait people out. There is a little bit of a surge in some of those roads, but for the most part on. For the most part, on Park Street, they're all condos, and Main Street is a section that, if they, people are going to do it, either going through a condo section or. Business area, and if they were going to do it, they would have already.
Yeah, we've got to get these roads paved, I mean, that's, it's just people, people are tired. And we've got to get it done.
Exactly, so the thought is that um, to piggyback on the existing contract that we have with FGB specifically for these two roads for the milling and paving of. Main Street. It's a DOT, sorry, it's going to be bad, but the um. So this is a stretch of Main Street from Lakeview to Maple, so we won't touch Maple to Cherry only because the library is still. Under construction, once they're done, we'll do that last little piece, and then Park Street from one oh six to Elm. Basically, in essence, takes up everything that they're going to be doing, they're working on. Eversource is going to be working on the intersection of Elm Street and the tie-in with gas, and then coming up Elm Street to Grove. Down Grove to Pine and then Pine, so those, those two areas. Will, will, will stop short of the area that they're working in, and then repave those after they're done, when we come in to do Elm Street, we'll tie in Elm Street all the way through the intersection. If you follow me on that, um, so. Based upon the pricing that we had from um FGB for the work. The increase would be two hundred and twelve thousand forty-eight dollars and eighty cents, I've added a fifteen percent contingency of thirty-one eight hundred for a total project cost of. Two forty-three, eight forty-eight, eighty, um, I have emails into Eversource on the fact that. These are their responsibility to repay us for. Um, Aquarian has already paid us for their portion of the work that occurred last year. Um, and now we're just waiting for Eversource to come through for the second sec- second stretch of Main Street and then Park Street itself. So wait for reimbursement from them, but uh, given the fact that the contractor is going to be coming in with the next week to start all of his work, I wanted to add this to it and then have him do it all in one piece. That way Commissioner Foley won't call me again on Park Street, Kevin won't yell at me.
So, this is going to start after the Fourth of July? Is it?
No, this is going to start within the next week.
Oh, okay, I thought we were waiting till.
No, the milling, the micro thin overlay, we always wait for the end, because milling and paving, we can bring traffic on it or detour traffic around it. The, the micro thin overlay is a basically a mandatory sit of the road for about fifteen to twenty minutes for the material to set. If you drive on it immediately, it's wet, and you're going to track it on your car, track it into your house. It gets quite awful at that point, that's, so it's a little bit of a different technique, a little different material, so we.
So the, the, the timing difference.
That's right, that's exactly way for everyone to be out of town, and then we could take care of it. So that's, that's the uh, the extent of the request. Is to just add these two roads onto the existing contract, and then we'll bid out the remaining roads uh at a later date, September for uh. For the rest of the roads, we're looking at for Eversource's contribution.
Sure.
I can just, a quick question, um, so we're moving these roads up. First, right, to address, because these are, are going to be later or two, twenty twenty-three, so you're going to get lots of happy people about that. Uh, so that's great, um, is anything being moved off then as these are being advanced? Okay, so they're just being added to what we already have, okay, super, and then the um. The homeowners or residents that live along these uh roads that would. Be eligible for the um, the gas from Eversource, how many is that about?
Apart from the condo complexes, it's not that many single family homes, if you're looking at, probably a dozen or so.
A dozen.
Yeah, maybe.
On, on both stretches.
Both stretches, yeah.
Okay.
You had about four or five on Main Street, everything else is, is a, is a, you know, condo complex, and then on Park Street, pretty much the same thing. Lower Park Street is where the, where the residential is, and then it kind of rolls into condos at that point in time, and they're problematic to try to bring forward.
Do the condos take advantage of the Eversource?
We've had one or two.
Okay.
But that's uh, that, that's, that's very difficult to service a condominium.
Okay.
And, and presumably Eversource reaches out to. Everybody, it's.
They've reached out to everybody.
Right.
Multiple times, and it's, you know, it's been three years, gas has been in front of their house for three years, they've been running, driving across the trench for three years. They, if they wanted to, I think they would have by now, right? You know.
Good.
So Aquarian is. Paying for part of the cost of Main Street, but, but not Park Street, is the water main been replaced at Park Street?
On Park Street, no, but when I asked Aquarian, I gave Aquarian our five year plan, and then I've given them our five year plan going forward, so they had our plan back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Coming forward, and then they, they just got our, our twenty-one and then our twenty-two going forward, they didn't have any um. Feeling to do it, I think they had done it back in nineteen ninety-nine, to be honest with you, and then we repaved the road in ninety-nine initially. But no, they have no, no plans.
Okay. For the questions? I move, approve the request as described by Tiger to, for a contract with it, to extend the contract with FGB Construction. For a total of two forty-three, eight forty-eight, eighty, which includes a fifteen percent contingency for the uh milling and paving of Main and Park Streets as described by Tiger. A second?
My turn, yeah, second.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You know, thank you. Tiger and Bill, if you want to join us. This is a piece of the Playhouse uh. Puzzle, and we will go into executive session later on the Playhouse.
On which item? Oh, this item, okay, sorry. Alright. You're up.
Terry just said on item number ten, she, this provides for needed funding for the movie theater improvements, I suggest inclusion of consideration in the planning of making the now existing right of way. From parking to Elm at permanent easement, which I recall has been suggested in the past by legal counsel. To the extent this may dovetail with accesses to the building, this would be a timely inclusion and overall planning for future use.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, um, we've actually dealt with this, um, so I. Appreciate Terry's comment. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, um, yeah, so. Uh, the larger picture of accessible. Building again down from the back parking lots, down our alley, there's a set of stairs there, or five, maybe six foot elevation change. We want to make this parking lots in the back of the buildings here. To Elm Street accessible, so um, and it'll also incorporate some of the Playhouse work that's going on. So we're asking to get approval to have a. Uh, Architecture Preservation Studio to um design. The accessible route, and this is going to incorporate some of the work that's going, because we have. Great problems in the alley with the Playhouse exits, just steps down and everything, so we want to try to fix that whole alley up and make those. Uh, build a ramp as well on one side of those stairs, so that we ramp it down from, so we meet all the new uh ADA codes.
That's pretty steep.
It is pretty steep.
You mean, it's going to be kind of.
Going to be a switchback, most likely, so uh, we're going to. Come up with a few ideas, hopefully, that how we can achieve that and uh make it aesthetically nice too. And then also in the front of the Playhouse, there's a, on the sidewalks, the elevations are a little different going into. Doors there, so we're going to try and incorporate, basically go around the building to make it all uh. One grade, tells me.
We had looked at it a number of years ago on the staircase in the back. And it was a three switchback.
Yeah.
Set of ramps to come down, but then it actually blocked some of this, some of the. Doorways coming out of the theater because of its extent, so in order to keep a sidewalk, to keep a staircase and then a ramp structure. It actually, by the time we got finished, it blocked off some of the doors, that's why we feel that it's important to have. Uh, Architectural Preservation Studios come in, since they're already looking at the envelope of the building.
Yeah.
Egress and the um, ingress and egress for this, the building itself to tie this in with it. And Bill mentioned again, the front of the building, when we did the sidewalks originally in the front of the building, and there's still two steps going into earth gardeners, and there would be. Steps going into the other side of the lobby, um, if we were to open that up. And the thought is that, while we come forward with the bump outs, I can't make the great change difference, right now we're able to do it for every single. Building coming forward, we can't make it for the Playhouse, so we're actually going to have to look at doing a, a ramping system. Similar to what's in front of Le Pen, right, Le Pen Cotidian has the exact same problem, you come out of Le Pen and you go to a ramp down to the side, the exact same situation. In order to provide access into the building, so we feel to have um APS come in and do a holistic look. Of not only the front of the building, they're looking at already the, the building itself, now look at the front of the building as far as um. Ingress and egress, and then tie in with the uh. With the exterior parking lot, the rear parking lot, given the fact that, you know, we had a site visit last week, um. We think it's important to, to come forward with that as well, and, and finally tie that back parking lot in to the theater itself.
The money for this is, i- is this part of the? You know, the new Playhouse Theater?
The design work is, yes.
Design work is, yes, and we'll, uh, once we get the. Um, estimates, then we'll have a discussion on how we uh. But that'll roll into the whole budget for the.
Right, we'll see what the scope is at that point, and what they come forward with and what the scope is at that time, and then we'll determine uh funding at that point.
Yeah, just, so I understand the uh, the doors, I, I don't know whether those can be doors on the side in the, it's by the, the stairwell. But don't, isn't on the other side behind Le Pen, there's also a place where the um propane tanks are?
Yes.
And maybe access to the backs of some of the buildings along Elm Street.
Provide access, yeah, their original look was, the staircase was on that side, so where the propane tanks were, and then the access to the back of the buildings.
Yeah.
Staircase was on that side, so it didn't change, so that whole access remained the same, and the ramping was on the other side. Towards the building, so we'll be, we'll be providing the access necessary to the, to rear of the buildings that they have now.
Yeah.
And providing access to the propane tank area that, that is there, and then the side of Le Pen will be open, it's more the work on, it's more to be. Of the work will be done on the, on the Playhouse side of the alley, if you look at it, there's two staircases.
Yeah.
We're looking to take one staircase out, make that a ramp, the other staircase stay.
Stays, okay.
Although hopefully the restaurants and the other buildings there would convert to natural gas, because the gas is right there now. And we have a plan.
We're going to keep that in mind too, when we do their work to. Make it, the gas line can get over there, so now we're going to roll back.
Right.
We're going to get all that.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions?
Not here.
I move or approve their request from Public Works to enter into contract with Architectural Preservation Studio DPC. For a total thirty-three thousand nine twenty-five for the uh. Design and related services to create ADA compliant accessible routes to the Playoffs Theater. As described by Bill and Tiger. Second?
Second here.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Signage.
So this next is a. Signage for two locations in town, um, it's rapid rectangular flashing beacon signage for um. The area one twenty-four in the YMCA, there's a crossing there, across from Wavine over to Saks or to uh. The YMCA itself, and at uh one oh six in Gower Road. Uh, we put the crossing in back in twenty twelve for Route one twenty-four in the YMCA. And then around twenty seventeen, we started dealing with the state as far as trying to upgrade the signage to a rapid rectangular flashing beacon. We were finally able to work through the state um plan that they need a traffic, an actual traffic signal plan for it um. To be installed, and we were able to get that design completed and our. Um, our encroachment permit, our permit to actually perform the work uh is with the DOT, and we feel that it should be coming forward within the next week or two. At that point in time, we'd like to have the materials come in and then finally install the beacons at one twenty-four in YMCA. And then the exact same thing at one oh six in Gower, we have a crossing there, and the residents along that area, Old Studio Road, what have you. This, the students and children cross that area to come to school, that's another area of focus for us, so um, we were able to work with Fuss and O'Neil. And actually come forward with a traffic signal plan suitable to the DOT for these two locations, now it's just coming forward with the contract. We had previously brought to you a contract for uh, or we had, had previously had signed a contract with um. With East Coast Sign for one RFB, now we're looking to put two more in, so we asked them to come back and revise, revise their price. And they're a, a better price than their competitor, Carmana, which is uh. We asked for price for them last time, they were high last time, and, and uh similar to this, the exact same thing, East Coast has been our supplier of signs for a number of years. They're very, very responsive, they're excellent to deal with if we have any concerns, especially with an item of this nature. Um, we'd like to go forward with this purchases for uh. Two sets of RRFBs for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and the funds are currently available on our sign account.
Questions?
I just want, are, are these solar panels, so that it's entirely um done through solar?
Solar and wireless, yeah, so they talk to each other, so we don't even have to dig up the road, just have to put in uh concrete bases. And install the signs, they talk to each other across.
And, and batteries.
And batteries, yeah, yeah, and that's so the same ones that weed and Elm.
Yeah.
Uh, and weed and Waackney, um. Main Street Farm Road, Saks itself, the exact same um design.
Great.
How, how many more of these would you? Like to have in a perfect world?
The, at present, we have ones planned for the crossing at the Nature Center across Owen Oak Ridge to get to the sidewalk. Um, as far as that sidewalk's concerned, we've been working for two years on a, on a permit, an encroachment permit with the DOT. We finally got traction, I think we're going to get our permit within the next week or so, the. The interns right now actually have that out to bid, so they worked on that bid package and it's out to bid on Thursday. So we'll look for numbers to come back within three weeks. And then we'll go forward with that, and then we'll build that crossing, so we're, the next step is that area. Um, one at. The, end of Park Street where it meets Owen Oak Ridge, um, when we finally were able to put the sidewalk through there in front of the church. One there, um. And then we might have a couple others, depending upon placement throughout town, might be a crossing at uh, from Bristow across the street.
I mean, they really work, but.
Yeah, but ninety-two percent adherence rate, you know, after a year, right, so they're pretty much a hundred percent at the time, and then after a year of installation. People still stop ninety-two percent of the time after a year. Every other sign, nowhere, no other sign comes close to, to that type of adherence rate. So, that's the, that's the overall thought, is to try to put in where, where we, where we would like, the police commission has approved each installation. And then the sidewalk installations have gone to PNC for an eight dash twenty-four, so we'll have to place the remaining ones as we go forward. It's really how to get rolling on this one, make sure that we uh, we're in concert with the DOT with our designer, and now we'll go forward with the next two. And do the exact same thing, continue to roll them out.
For the questions?
Not here.
I move, approve the request of Public Works to enter into a contract with East Coast Signs for twenty-one thousand nine fifty for the purchase of two. Our, our FB installations.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tiger.
So the next. I'm good? So good, the uh, so the next is uh, moving forward to fiscal twenty-three, um. We're looking at our first set of blanket purchase orders, this set is for the Highway Department. Um, spoke to John, John's working through his, he's going to come in with Parks and Recreation, and then Bill will come in. With uh, with town buildings, and we'll have uh, some similar ones for the transfer station, probably all at your, either, at your next meeting, the twenty-seventh. So these are basically um, requests to purchase, blanket purchase from various suppliers that we have. Uh, so for auto parts, police parts, um, bodywork, tires, loader parts. Um, small engine repair, tools and supplies, asphalt drainage supplies, masonry. Um, the list is, is quite thorough as far as who we are working with at present, where we've gotten our best pricing from. And uh, the majority of these items are very small in nature, right, but then they add up to a larger number by the end of the year, so. Um, as part of our purchasing policy, we've asked to come forward and say, okay, what is our? What was our run rate last year based upon our prior year's expenditures, and then come forward with uh, with that type of uh allocation for each one of these uh. Uh, manufacturers or suppliers, so I can ask any, answer any questions you might have on any one of them. Um, the, the total is a hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, and the funds are available on our twenty-three budget, so. Get together the purchase orders for these and have them ready for the July first rollout, so that come July one, if we need something, we can buy and, and um. And be able to pay back.
Questions?
For the vendor.
What, any significant changes from the prior year? Are they all about the same?
All about the same, yeah, it's all based upon last year, and pretty much what we've seen in the past year over year.
No questions?
Not here.
So, so we're actually approving. Purchase orders. As opposed to contracts?
Correct, yeah, we, that's, that, we, we did that similar last year, because the, the contracts, you, you can imagine some parts are a dollar. You know, five dollars, right, so how do we, how do we go forward with that, you know?
Okay, so I move, approve the request from Public Works to purchase the, the list of items as, as described by Tiger on our tablets and on the agenda. Second, second here, for the discussion? All in favor? Police of Eastman.
Okay. So.
Echo Hill Road.
Thirteen Echo Hill Road, we were um approached by the homeowners of thirteen Echo Hill Road, Kevin Mardoff, um. They were looking to sell their home. And there is an easement that was established in nineteen ninety-two with the prior owners, it's a slope rights easement. Um, that was installed by PNC, and in essence, there's a paper road that runs along Echo Hill Road, Echo Hill Road is a private road. There's a paper road that runs right next to it, it's basically.
What kind of road?
Paper road, it's on paper, but it's not actually built, right, the town has no thought that we're actually going to go forward and build this road. And at the end of it, where they live, the thought was to incorporate a cul-de-sac, and we. And at the end of it, where they live, the thought was to incorporate a cul-de-sac and we needed slope rights easement in order to build that. So PNC said, well, when when DPW comes in to build this road, they're gonna need this easement. And encumbered the property or asked to be encumbered the property with this slope rights easement. It hasn't affected the property owners up until now. So even when the the previous owner, when they bought it, hasn't affected them at all. They've had use of the land since we're not actually, we don't have anything built or constructed on it. Now they're trying to sell their property and each one of the prospective buyers is coming in saying. You know, this easement, I'll buy it with this easement, but I'm gonna take two hundred thousand dollars off my purchase price. In essence, you know, so they came to us and said, would you release us from the easement? The town has absolutely no desire to build a permanent public road there.
Okay.
Sure.
What was the origins of the easement in terms of?
The origin of the easement was it was it was a there was a subdivision that was created and at the time it was created, PNC added this easement to it. And it was agreed upon at the time for the fact that there might be a future road going in in its place and we would need this. Area to build that road. We don't have any desire to build a private or a permanent public road in that area. It's been serviced by a private road since before prior to it and since that time. And we don't have a, we would not have a reason to build. A town owned public road in that area, so therefore we have no reason to use the land that was underneath this easement. So we'd like to release the the Mardos from that or the property owner from that.
Was there a cost to the town originally with respect to the?
No, they gave it to us for a dollar.
Have we ever made a private road, a public road?
No. We've been asked, we get asked every single time someone buys on a public road, a private road, they come in and ask. In this case. Yeah, the the cost, no, they've already been serviced. So no, we've been asked to take over private roads, the majority of them, if not all of them have not been constructed to town standards. So when we say to them that you need to build it to our standard and then we'll take it over, the conversation usually ceases.
So so just so I understand, this is this is off of Silver Mine Road, right? Is that the private road? And are they the only ones that have that easement?
They're the only ones that have these, yeah, it's basically the bulb of the cul-de-sac is in there, is on their parcel, everyone else it fronts up against what what is considered this paper road.
Okay. And presumably if in the future there were some reason to make that a private road, you just have to go with whomever the new owners are and ask for the easement again.
At that point in time, make it a public road.
To make it a public.
Yeah.
It is private road.
Yeah, right.
We have, we have no desire to expand our road system at present.
Would be the advantage of doing that. Yeah.
To the town?
Yeah.
I don't see any.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, there isn't, it doesn't, it's not a through road, it's not, it doesn't connect to anywhere, you know, in particular.
It was part of original plan, how far back.
That I don't know.
Okay.
You know.
Okay.
Okay, no further questions? I move or approve this request from Public Works to release an existing easement held by the town in the Kane thirteen Echo Hill Road. Second.
Second.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Hi. Just one further discussion, this doesn't require PNC approval or anything, no, okay.
No, we you, this body has released easements in the past, we've done it for other properties on Green Meadow. Drainage easements, things of that nature that were no longer necessary, it's very similar.
Next item, the tree ward, brother, tree warden.
So the tree ward went out for his May twenty six twenty twenty two bid for six separate locations. Some are in Wavine Park specifically around the pool entrance to take some ash trees down. About six trees there, we went out to bid, we received three bids, bids were exceptionally tight. Hutchinson Tree Care won the bid at nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. By forty five dollars over Alstead Tree. And we'd like to go forward and award the contract to Hutchinson Tree to for this work.
Any questions? I move or approve the request, the tree warden to enter into a contract with question trees in ninety seven ten. For tree and stump removal and pruning at various locations throughout the town as described by Tiger, second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
That will bring us to, again, let's complete the agenda. Small items and then we will have the discussion on affordable housing plan. Contracts under ten thousand dollars, any? Questions or comments about the contracts, tax overpayments? Your real estate automobile?
Do we have to approve taxes? Yes.
Yeah, I move or approve the tax overpayments on the tablets.
Start it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Then let's go into the portable housing item back on item number. Fourth.
Yeah.
Good morning, Lynn. Before we do that, let me just make a couple remarks. Last week at my. Monthly West Cog meeting, we had about an hour long discussion about the West Cog. Affordable housing. Plan, it was made clear that. You know, they re they rebranded it as a toolbox because West Cog actually does not have an obligation to have an affordable housing plan, but each town, each municipality does. And so since many small towns don't have the resources to. To write their own plans with consultants, this Stanford does and. Perhaps in our walk. We, along with most of the other West Cog towns, decided to wrap our plan around their base document as an amendment. The base document doesn't actually get filed with the state. Curly and they also made the point, our plan could be one page. Obviously, we have more than one page. So we're required to have a portable housing plan, that's why we were doing this and. The document that has been approved by the committee, which I would emphasize is not a committee of planning and zoning, I should I should mention Terry, Terry. Terry Springs comment here this morning by email was that the full board of planning is owning should have approved the plan, it's not actually the. PZ's plan, it's the town's plan. And a committee was appointed as a town, we appointed this committee back in February, January, when we appointed this committee. It's so it's it's a town plan, it's not a planning and zoning plan and that committee was not a committee of planning and zoning, so in response to Terry's. Comment about it should have been approved by planning and zoning, that's not correct. But anyway, a plan is just a plan, I I think New Can has done a remarkable job in the past fifteen or twenty years. With our affordable housing, we ought to be proud of what we've done at Millport, Mill and. And Kane and Parish. Obviously, a lot of controversy right now about eight thirty G, not only in New Canaan but throughout the state. Eight thirty G is is a statute that in our view doesn't work well for towns, especially affluent towns. And but that's a larger issue. In the context of our particular plan, you'll notice on page nine. There's a statement which we're gonna have to amend, change, it says as of October twenty one. When phase one of pain in Kane and Parish redevelopment was completed, the town once again had sufficient UE points to apply for a second. Moratorium. And such application currently underway. I suppose that statement is true, I mean, it's currently underway, but it's. I wanted to announce this morning and I've issued a statement which is available to the press and I'll read it. The town attorney's office, Richard Moses, PC, has been working with the town planner Lynn Abney. For the past several weeks, preparing to file an application with the State Department of Housing for an affordable housing moratorium under eight thirty G. In the course of this review, including receipt of a public comments from attorney Tim Hollister. And consultation with Connecticut DOH, town attorney Nick Bemonte and town planner. Abney determined that the town does not qualify for a moratorium at this time. However, the town will qualify and will file an application for moratorium once the additional forty units of Kane and Parish. Affordable housing expansion project are completed and occupied. Which is estimated to occur in November, I suppose that occupied is when they get a CO, not necessarily occupied.
TCO.
Hmm, TCO. The point being that unlike the sixty units, they may have take a little longer to occupy because they're bringing in new people. As opposed to transferring over the residents, anyway, the rest of my statement says the town does not currently have enough affordable housing points. To qualify for a moratorium because one delays completing all of the units at Kane and Parish. As a result of the COVID pandemic and supply chain disruptions, that refers to adverse sources, gases delay in getting gas hooked up. And two deductions from pre-existing government assisted sort of housing that were demolished because they were obsolete. The town did not fully account for these deductions in its initial calculations for the moratorium application. Due to a lack of clarity in in Connecticut DOH's affordable housing points calculation methodology. Which Connecticut DOH has now clarified. So in the context of our plan. You know, we do reference the fact that we were trying to maintain point rolling moratoriums in order to manage. The process of where affordable housing is built in town, we will get. Our affordable housing moratorium again in. After November, when Kane and Parish is fully completed. And. So with that, we're supposed to approve this document, again, this is the town's plan, it's not the planning and zoning plan. Obviously, the housing authority is a key component of our plans because they're the ones that adopted the strategy with respect to Millport. And Kane and Parish. And. As has been mentioned, Attorney Hollister was the attorney for the town, board, the. Housing Authority, not for the town of the Canaan, on the Kane and Parish project. That that plan contemplated the. The achievement of subsequent moratoriums based upon the completion. Had it been on schedule, we would have, we would have had our moratorium back by now. If the additional forty units were completed by by now, as they were planned to be when they were initially approved in two thousand eighteen. So that's the background. We had Jack was comment. I don't know if you want to go into any further discussion about the plan, but essentially. You know, a committee of very responsible people, I I was a member of the committee, we've had hours of of discussions to come up with this plan. And we will have a lot of work to do to to make another project. That will qualify for another moratorium in four four years' time. You know, I searched in vain to try to find two and a half acres for a police department. And if you can't find two and a half acres for a central building, it's it's equally hard to find. Property in town for for affordable housing. So those are my comments, I don't know if you want to make some comments before. Before we have a discussion about the, or ask questions, Lynn.
Sure. If I may, and I I we just saw your comments, Kevin. And I just seven thirty this morning, just taking a look at the at the stream, email stream and so forth. Is is this something that that the town planner, do you understand, did you work with the town attorney? I know, I'm actually talking about the 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 hue points and whether or not we actually qualify. For.
We've been back and forth.
Okay, obviously, good discussion back and forth and and so had, did you speak with directly with the Department of Housing on this as well or?
I've spoken to the Department of Housing over the course of preparing it multiple times for the last several months.
Then why are you speaking to?
Oh, sorry. I've spoken with the Department of Housing multiple times over the last several months while preparing the document. And prior to preparing the document to understand what was entailed, town attorney has spoken to the Department of Housing. Subsequent to receiving public comments. And we've gotten, you know, comments from the DOH.
So it was a kind of a surprise, right, that we were able to take our original original hue points that we had factored in, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, let me let me come out of that because it's kind of unusual, the way the process works, you file an application. And then attorney has to write an opinion certifying that you comply. You know, that's kind of unusual, our experience, usually an applicant applies and. The. Body with state or federal has to decide whether on the facts, whether you you comply. In this case, the town attorney who happened to also have been involved with Westport's litigation over their moratorium. Three years ago, nineteen, I think.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen.
They had a settlement over there, Attorney Hollister was involved over there. Appealing their moratorium application, appears that they, the rules changed with respect to. Deducting units that were formerly affordable. In our case, our strategy was to demolish. Units that had become obsolete and.
And replace. Demolish and replace.
Demolish and replace, so there's been a bit of disagreement over this whole thing, obviously, people who put the strategy in place. Don't agree, but at the end of the day, the rules are the rules that the state decides to follow. If they've changed the rules, we gotta follow the rules that they say we're gonna apply. And.
So in your statement, Kevin, you mentioned. Comments from attorney Tim Hollister. Lynn, can you explain to me exactly what his role is with respect to this process?
Tim Hollister?
Yeah.
So as in in the public comments, he was just a general member of the public that offered comments.
But to be clear, he has, he has worked for us as a town in the past, is that correct?
Correct, he's worked for the housing authority, not specifically the town.
And and how long did he work for the housing authority and represent the housing?
He represented them on Millport, phase one, Millport, phase two and Kane and Parish, so.
And was paid accordingly, correct?
I believe that is.
Yeah, is it also true that Mr. Hollister is currently representing a developer? That has pending applications eight thirty G, is that correct?
Correct, he represents a developer that has two pending eight thirty G applications.
Is that strange to you that that's would seem to be a conflict of interest? Is that a yes?
Probably yes, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
I don't know that I can top that. Okay. So anyway, I I I don't, I just wonder if, is there any value in waiting twenty four hours to make sure that, you know. The town planner, the town attorney.
Oh, no, I've 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 been through this all the last week, I mean, I.
Oh, okay, we we just saw it.
I mean, we went back and forth last week, you know, it came as a great surprise to me.
Yeah.
That there should be so little, there's so so little agreement. And.
Even among our.
It it among our lawyers, not Hollister.
Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if we agree, the fact of the matter is we now have a definitive. Confirmation from the Department of Housing as to what they're gonna apply when they receive our application and it makes no sense and and again, going back to the point that. The town attorney has to write an opinion certification that we comply, if they cannot do that, we cannot file.
Yeah, that I understand.
And they can't do that because of the Westport situation.
Westport situation was an element, it wasn't the entire. Issue, if there were other issues involved with Westport, but Attorney Hollister, I mean, you know, changed law firms because of that situation in Westport. After calling the town, I think racist, you know, so it was kind of like his his performance in this whole matters. Rather questionable. And but you know, we are where we are, you know, the housing. Department.
Has taken a position about how the hue points are calculated, which sounds like it's different from how we calculated them back in twenty seventeen. When we first applied for the moratorium, has that changed?
That changed.
That changed. Okay, okay, so our original calculation was based on how we did it back in twenty seventeen and it has subsequently changed?
Correct, everyone in the state has applied the methodology that we used in two thousand seventeen. And the only case that applies it differently is the Westport case. Brookfield is the only play, only community that subsequently.
This is rather unique, another important thing that I should have mentioned in my early comments was that. The consultants for Westport that put together the West Cog. Working. Toolbox made the point that Fairfield County is has been the most successful in the state in building affordable housing. And he made the comment that everybody in the room, eighteen towns, are the leading people in the state with expertise on creative and. Affordable housing strategies, the rest of the state hasn't grown, so when you say you're the best, it's kind of like in comparison to the rest of the state, which hasn't grown. But the reality is, Stanford and Newark have benefited from private sector. Development of affordable housing because you can make it work when your cost per unit is maybe thirty thousand dollars per unit for land. In New Canaan, the cost of land is a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a unit and and. So historically, I mean, I've talked to many developers over the past few months. You know, the senior housing and other other and most developers shake their heads and say, I can't make money here and I'm not gonna try to build, build here, so. But again, we have an obligation, the other important point that was made at the West Cog meeting, that ten percent is not a goal. You know, no, we're not gonna have ten percent ever. Nor should every town in Connecticut try to have ten percent. It's a trigger to allow a. Poorly constructed statute to allow developers to come in and. Build things that they wouldn't be allowed. Um build things that they wouldn't be allowed um to build, so we have to continue to fight for local control over our development. Um A thirty G should be changed and and modified to accommodate the different needs of different communities around the state and um. We're going to have to continue to make, to fight that.
Well, I think that the plan that we're putting together for the first time is the first step in the right direction.
It's our second plan, we did one five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they put together a plan in um two thousand eleven.
Right, 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 so um and you know, I I think briefly uh Westcog had in their earlier draft of their now called Toolkit. Toolbox, excuse me, uh other towns, I just, I I I'm happy to flip pages, I had submitted something three weeks ago or. Some which hasn't been picked up, but and I'm happy to hand this into you and so forth, but uh in terms of um. I just thought maybe just focus on a couple of key themes with that I.
Yeah, we had our comment period, I mean, you know, I except for this body to change a plan that a committee has recommended, um you know. I'm not.
I submitted my comments, some of which we're not.
Well, but you you missed the comment period for.
No, I didn't.
Wait, I mean, we can edit the document.
We we can edit in terms of corrections.
Yeah.
And Jacomo made some comments about about correction, that's one thing, but uh. You know, the the committee came forward with this with this uh plan. I think we ought to accept their work and uh if there's corrections, fine, we'll make corrections.
So and ju- just a comment on your comments is that ultimately, the committee recommends that this document be a dynamic document, that this isn't the. Final ultimate plan that it change over time with respect to the town's needs for affordable housing and how we want to respond to stuff. We have to file a new plan every five years based on the state statute, so this isn't just going to sit on a shelf, that was ultimately the. One of the goals of the committee.
Okay, well, I'm happy to resubmit my comments from three weeks ago, which was during the comment period.
Wasn't.
I beg pardon?
The comment period expired for the public comment.
Okay, I thought we asked for comments three weeks ago, so that's what I I supplied. So we've moved the uh actual discussion to today's meeting and I won't go into. Everything that I've just sort of identified or just, you know, making sure, I think somebody's raised the issue, may maybe it was Giacomo and others. But education is a big part of um, you know, what our community needs to understand in terms of what our uh affordable housing plan is. So I don't know if we're planning on having uh any sort of public hearing or discussion about these items. We had a great, this is several months ago, I think, where we had somebody from Westcog come in and sort of sort of set the 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 stage, if you will. About, this is maybe even a year ago, where someone came in and talked about um affordable housing plans and so forth, who was that from Westcog? Who came in to talk about this when we were first developing the committee?
No, no, we weren't developing a committee, we we established the committee in January.
Yeah, well, there was also a discussion from somebody from Westcog just talking about affordable housing and the plan. I might be mistaken, it might be ways back.
You referring to um Francis Pickering's presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Possibly, yes, possibly, that's right, I was listening in on that, okay, right, okay, that's what it was, all right, thank you. Um if you don't mind, I can just, can we use this time to go through?
We have to approve a plan today, um so.
Right, so if we can just go through, I uh my pages, I just printed out from the the tablet, so just I'll submit these to you. Um sort of the the nits, the.
I don't, I don't think we can make changes that the committee is not going to have function on, I mean, that's that's the problem.
Okay, some of, some of the changes are are grammatical.
This is not the Board of Selectmen's. Uh plan, this is a plan that has been recommended by a committee.
Yeah.
Um and it's corrections, corrections are one thing, but not not rewriting, not rewriting things, but going back to the committee.
I'm not rewriting it, okay, I've provided these corrections a couple of weeks ago. These are questions like I always have of anybody who submits something to us, I, if you would. Uh allow me to, I listed a couple of questions, I to, so the first would be on the public sector projects. And there's just a reference to New Canaan Neighborhoods. Uh which I know is an established, obviously, or organization, it's not listed here as, it just says New Canaan, this is on page five. New Canaan Neighborhoods is an excellent example of public-private partnership, which I think that's great. And I would just recommend that you you maybe want to further describe that um as to who they are and and what that relationship is all about. Also note that in the um the table that's provided with respect to strategies from two thousand eleven. Uh under implementing other strategies, you have like little check marks that says, you know, we've done all these. One was the, consider the establishment of a housing trust, I believe we have actually done that. So that may, you wanna, might want to clarify that on the, that it's actually been done.
Those are the two thousand eleven study recommendations.
Right, and what and what the the uh committee has done is actually identified which actually has been achieved. These little, in in my case, there are little red check marks, one of those that has been achieved is the establishment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I'm just pointing that out, that you might want to reflect that in the um in the chart that you provided. Another uh bunch of uh typos and grammatical errors and so forth. Um on the moratoria, one of my questions was, when do we expect to file and the reasons for the delay, and so we got that update today. Um your point, Kevin, on the uh issue one, that New Canaan will never meet the state's ten percent. Affordable uh housing units, it it the paragraphs go on and and says, assuming a steady growth rate in total housing stock. New Canaan could conceivably meet the ten percent requirement in twenty eighty, obviously sixty years from now. Uh and what are we assuming is is the steady growth rate in total housing, where where do we come up with that?
I believe in reference to that, we just used the census data and tracked it along.
Okay, so assuming, and so how do we, when we think about the big plan in terms of housing and so forth, how do we accommodate? Not only affordable housing, but also housing in general, if you're looking at the census plan to twenty eighty. Uh I just, as we're going forward, I I wonder whether the word never is still appropriate. Uh as you think forward, and I'm not going to be around in twenty eighty, but as we think about. Uh you know, at that steady growth rate and how we uh, I think your numbers came out to be about. Every, was it every twenty years, you're you're, yes, thirty, three, three hundred units and so forth. So I I guess conceivably, you can hit hit your numbers that it wouldn't be never, but I think. Eight thirty G would be likely changed uh at some point to to make that modification, but just some clarity there.
The only way you get there is you urbanize New Canaan, and that's the whole point about fighting for local control.
Right.
So I mean, I personally, I wouldn't agree with these statements, I was a member of the committee, but you don't always agree with everything in a, you know, in a plan or a report, so.
You don't agree with how it's written now, is that what you're saying, yeah, I.
It doesn't matter that I don't agree, because a committee, committee approved this.
Yeah, so I'm just off offering some observations, obviously, that I think the the way it's been written to address that eighteen point six percent. Are households in New Canaan earning less than eighty percent of SMI, so there is clearly a need, there's a lot of. You know, I appreciate that this document was written to identify actually, setting aside eight thirty G. That there is truly a need based on the uh number of individuals who work in town, whether it's healthcare, retail, other services, et cetera. So I think that this document has done a good job of actually identifying the need. Um also found of interest that twenty-one percent of New Canaan's householders are renters. And I just looked at some of the numbers in the toolbox as well, that's actually, I think the average is like twenty-five, twenty-six percent of renters. And and I don't know if that's changed trend-wise, but I thought that was an interesting um fact. Um also, let's see. Um just as you look at these strategies, and 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 this is to my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen here. As we look forward, and these are on the um, the maintaining a rolling moratorium, continuing to pri- prioritize. Public construction of affordable housing, I assume that's a, that's kind of more of a priority than the third one. Which is uh continue to enable private construction of housing that meets various types. And then the last one, continue to uh study alternative strategies. And I guess when you think about this, two things come to mind, one is, what is the expected cost? That we should think about in terms of what the town might be responsible for. In terms of public construction of affordable housing, I think this may have come up as a point at the P and Z meeting earlier this week. But what is, do we have sort of a sense of what the town might be committed to in terms of affordable housing? Or is that something that this ongoing working group would be factoring in?
Well, there's no ongoing working group yet.
Oh, we're not going to, this this committee that established that this one and done, or they're going to.
Oh, this is recommending, this is recommending that there be a a permanent committee, we haven't decided that yet.
Okay, and so that they'll be the ones kind of assessing what the the commitment and cost would be in terms of the town's commitment to affordable housing?
Right now, the Housing Authority has done most of the heavy lifting with funds from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Right.
That we've collected. Um but uh that would be a determination of the committee and the town, whether they're going forward, the town wants to contribute as well.
Okay, so in terms of responsible leadership on these strategies, that's going to be based, given to. A more permanent committee going forward, is that the plan?
We have to decide that.
Right.
This committee has made a recommendation, um you know, historic, and the Housing Authority has taken the lead. Um and uh whether we continue that, we'll have to decide.
What's your recommendation going to be?
I haven't.
Haven't thought about it, yeah, okay.
I have, I haven't thought about it.
I think it makes, I think it makes sense.
It's not appropriate now to to. Do more than approve this plan, which we're required to have by the state, so.
Right, okay, um this, I thought one of the strategies that was referred to in terms of, again, prior to. Prioritizing the public construction is going through an inventorying, identifying potential sites, et cetera. Uh there there offers something that I found was interesting, for instance, properties under tax or mortgage foreclosure. May be ideal for this type of purchase, and I'm just wondering, how big is that cohort?
It's not, it's not, it's not very big, it's a stupid statement, you know, but people.
This is a stupid statement, oh, okay.
We don't, that that doesn't happen.
Right, okay, so this is.
Yeah.
Okay. So drafted as such, but anyway, all right, I it's not big, okay, thank you for that. Um and then again, perhaps I was just curious as who would be responsible for some of these things about evaluating the appropriateness of fees? I assume this is more of P and Z and I'm talking about um, this is the um. Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So. That's under the auspices of P and Z is.
P and Z may um recommends a fee, but you guys ultimately approve all fees for the town, so. Um this body actually approved that fee back in, I believe it was two thousand seven, when it was originally.
Um so any modifications to that, just the flow would come from P and Z presumably, and then to the Board of Selectmen? Is that how that works?
They recommend, they make a recommendation of what they think fees should be um, if they need to be raised. And then it comes before this body during the budget season as a fee.
But specifically for the Affordable Housing Trust, yeah, that's going to be something that this committee has recommended, that will be considered, okay. All right, great, um. That this statement, again, I don't know if something you agree with or not, the town holds some responsibility for footing the bill. Uh this was under seeking ways for the town or the uh Housing Authority to partner with private developers. And constructing affordable units and and to Kevin, I I agree that it's with private developers, it's. Obviously, very costly to develop and and to consider adding a component of affordable housing or a hundred percent of affordable housing. It's going to be something that uh incentive, incentivization that happens, I presume. Uh to get this to be something that actually is doable.
No, no developer would ever try to build a hundred percent affordable housing in.
Right, so that's why.
Their right mind, so.
Right, and it's even hard for just a percent, so.
They do it in Stanford, they do in Noak, because you can do it economically, you can't do it in New Canaan, Connecticut, so.
Right, okay, so and then is, will hue points actually be helped? In the, some of the recommendations that are also made by this committee in terms of. Uh offering or directing residents to finance programs available under uh CHAF or USDA. Uh mortgages, is that something that we are active with in terms of suggesting? And if if somebody is able to take out a CHAF alone for their mortgage, is that contributable to our hue points?
Um so so based on the statute, it it could be, but it's not clear how and um. We'd have to research that further, it's come up as an issue to look at, but there's very few, there's like five, I believe, is what the last count was in New Canaan.
Okay.
So it's.
Okay, thank you. And the um, this is again on my page twenty-two, but the New Canaan's housing needs, and it looks like a pie chart of. Um age-restricted affordable units, workforce units, market rate units, uh special needs units. Is just, it's just an illustration of everything's equal, or we actually have a a sense of what the housing needs are in each one of these categories? It's a pie chart on my page twenty-two. I'll show it to you later and you can let me know, it's 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 not, it looks like they're all equal, but I don't know whether we've actually made an assessment. Of what the the greater needs are.
Are you looking at the May draft?
Yep, I'm in the same draft, it's just when I printed it out from the uh, it's, you're on landscape and I'm on portrait, so. It's it's under the s- number seven, revise the zoning regulations to incentivize the creation of senior special needs and workforce housing. And there's a pie chart there, and it looks like every single one of those units is equal. Um. No? And then the last uh few comments in terms of um. The uh evaluating the efficacy of eliminating or modifying square footage minimums. Uh I, this, is this underway if New Canaan is serious about adding smaller size, more affordable units to its housing, housing stock? Again, I don't know if this is just a sentence that works, or is this something that was actively underway by? Any group or?
No, no, this was one of the recommendations that the town, the town, the town or a subsequent committee should consider considering.
I'm not sure people would agree with that, because you know, like it with Canyon Parish, they didn't uh, they didn't try to make small units.
Right.
They made units that people are willing to live in, so.
Right, it could accommodate families and so forth, yes, okay. Um and then the the last one, right before the conclusion here, um this is, it it says that. New Canaan should explore how Housing Authority and New Canaan Neighborhoods can better partner with the town as a nonprofit entity. That operates in New Canaan to further facilitate the development and maintenance of affordable units, how's that working now?
Um.
The working relationship with the, how is that working now to facilitate the development?
With the town, the Housing Authority and New Canaan Neighborhoods?
Yeah.
So, um. I mean, New Canaan Neighborhoods and the Housing Authority are partnered together.
For just New Canaan Parish or for all?
Or Canaan Parish, um they're partnered together for um Canyon Parish right now.
Okay.
So, but I mean, in in the future, we can think about how to partner everyone together.
I guess it might just help us to understand for everybody to understand just a little bit more about, I certainly know the Housing Authority, but I don't know very much about the New Canaan. Um neighborhoods, I think it's, I think it's a great concept, but maybe further expl- explanation in this document might be helpful. Um and just going forward, just do we understand what the, you know, the sort of the overall? Thank you for all the work that's gone in from your committee, that's super, as you said, it's a working document, so uh hopefully they'll continue. Working document from this committee or? So that'd be wrapped up.
One of the, one of the recommendations of the committee is that there be a a affordable housing committee of some sort at the town level.
So they'll own this plan and.
That that.
Modified going forward.
Yes, would be modified with respect to the town's needs.
That's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, yes, okay.
So I'll submit um my. Edits that you're going to want to edit anyway, in terms of just grammatical corrections and so forth, so for your final, but other than that, those are my comments.
Yeah, look, I think um as a town, we have made great strides in affordable housing, I mean, Milport. You can't, uh Canyon Parish, um if if you go over and you look what's, we've actually done, it's incredible. Um the fact is, we're up against a state that's controlled by a political party that has a. You can snake-like wrap around us and 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 that's unfortunate, Hartford doesn't give a damn about New Canaan. Uh your your good friend Ned Lamont, with all due respect, and 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 so, you know, this is, this is a bad law. Eight thirty G, doesn't make sense, it's um. It it's it's just bad law, and um at the end of the day, we're doing our best. To get affordable housing, I'm very much in favor of this, but this is not the way to do it, uh through eight thirty G, and I think this. Um what's playing out now is unfortunate, but that's simply a a byproduct. Of a a state that's run by one party, one political party, and you know, there's no opposition, and it's like, it's like Russia.
Well, let me add to that, I, because uh we did have the opportunity to speak with the governor um just two Saturdays ago. Especially about eight thirty G, and by the way, he feels very similar to what you're stating in terms of.
I'm glad to hear.
Well, you should talk to him directly. Well, you should talk to him directly.
That's the best news I've heard all, all week.
Well, Nikki should talk to him, because, um, you know, it's all about the plan and putting a plan together from New Canaan. So he's actually shared that.
I think it's less the governor, well, and, and, and more the legislature.
I can just finish, so, yeah, he's the, um, certainly, uh, shares and understands the value of local authority and control, and he said it directly to over eighty people, um, i- in New Canaan. So, um, at, of all parties who were present to hear that. And that's, you know, encouraging. I think he understands that, uh, it's something that he's looking forward to seeing what our plans are. Um, and he understands that one size doesn't fit all, and the.
Why, why didn't he, when, in, when, when he had COVID and he was issuing executive orders left and right, giving him power? Why didn't he permit us to continue our moratorium?
So the extension was to request from the legislature whether the moratorium would be. Uh, the legislature was voting on whether or not those extended, uh, executive powers.
You know, when it came to masks and everything else, and vaccines.
This is really about affordable housing.
Yeah, I made the, the comment, Kathleen, and I think we've done a damn good job of trying to.
And I agree.
Get affordable housing.
I agree, I agree.
And I think it's great that you have this personal relationship with Governor Lamont, and you're on record as saying that he is against eight thirty G. I think that's news.
He's, it's, well, he's been saying, uh, all along about the support of, uh, local authority for, uh, affordable housing. And it's about, you know, coming up with a plan. Nobody disagrees that, uh, having an appropriate plan about how we address affordable housing within or without the con- with, up the, uh, the context of eight thirty G. We have, we have a, a need that's been identified here, setting aside what the eight thirty G, which has been around since, what is it?
Nineteen eighty-nine.
Seventy-nine, seventy-nine, a long, long time. Um, so I think this is a great, uh, obviously continuation of what already has been a, uh, a very, uh, good and strong, uh, commitment to affordable housing. And I'm glad that we're continuing to this, because you have identified rightly so, that there are a lot of needs here for affordable housing. And I think hopefully we'll put together the right committee that continues it going forward. But this is about compromise and working together. And, uh, I am pleased the fact that this is something that the governor actually does recognize and has communicated that. So, um, let's focus on affordable housing, because that's what the theme is today. And, um, I think we're, we're, we're good to go forward. So thanks to everybody who's been involved in the work on here, on this, uh, particular document.
And I think Ned Lamont's Greenwich has eleven, eight thirty G.
No, I think it's thirteen. Or now it's fourteen.
Fourteen, it might be even be sixteen.
So you're gonna see the urbanization of downtown Greenwich like you, like no other, you know, seven, seven-story buildings in downtown Greenwich.
And that's a guy who's from, from Greenwich.
Yeah, so.
And we have two thus far, right?
Two.
Two.
Uh, I move, we approve this plan. Um, we can make some edits that are, that are corrections, but this plan has to move forward. And, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. I'll drop this off to you later, Lynn.
That brings us to, um, Selectmen's comments before we go into executive session on the real estate negotiation that's ongoing. And, um, I would only, uh, note that, uh, Jen Elsner, Health Director, has indicated cases are dropping, um, COVID cases are dropping. Uh, but we will continue to do three time a week's testing at Irwin. We can do, continue to do our vaccination clinics. Um, I guess the, uh, FDA is about to possibly approve, uh, vaccinations for under five-year-olds. I would encourage families to talk to their medical providers uh, uh, as to whether or not, uh, they wish to have their very young children vaccinated. And, um, that's all the comments I have, um, before we go into executive session. Any comments?
None here. Just one on, on boards and commissions, and I really appreciate the, the, uh, ZBA, um, position. Just if we can keep a track, track of what open boards and commissions that we have available, just, just if you can. Pam has that. And then as we, as we know, as they come in, you know, how many positions, just like we do for new employees, uh, or new positions that are opened up? We know that, you know, six supplied, and we're recommending somebody going forward. Just sort of as, give us a sense for the open boards and commissions, who are they replacing? If they, and this was just a question we had on ZBA as an example, um, just so that we understand. And that's, the community knows what's available, uh, in terms of, uh, boards and commissions, so that we know that we're getting a good, uh, sampling of, uh, people who might be interested in these positions, and that we're, we're filling them within due course of when the, these positions are open, so.
On that point, Kathleen, I, the DTC and the RTC, I keep track of this, so the parties are doing it.
Actually, we just got, I just got an email from, uh, uh, DTC, Christine.
But the, uh, the point is that, um, you know, I, uh, there, there's a whole group of un, unaffiliated voters out there who are eligible to be appointed. Um, and, um, to the, I've, I've appointed more unaffiliated people to boards and commissions, I think, in the history of the town.
Which is appropriate, because there's fewer Democrats and fewer Republicans.
Yeah.
I think that's.
You're certainly a growing group, and I think that, that's my point too. But the more public we are about what's available, people who are not affiliated with either the RTC or the DTC have an opportunity to know what's available.
I have people talk to me all the time about boards and commissions. I also, uh, um.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I also have the, uh, the chairman of the boards, um. Because it's better that they recruit people who are qualified than to have people who just wanna.
They know what's, yeah, what the needs are and so forth in terms of the diversity and the balance of, of, uh, experience, et cetera. So I think that's great, but it's, the, the more that we know that what's available from this body and the public, that'd be great. Thank you.
We need a UTC, Unaffiliated Town Committee.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session now at eight ten. We will come out of executive session and not vote on anything, um, which, and, and by the way, we'll, we'll probably have a special meeting on, uh, June six, uh, sixteenth or seventeenth. Sixteenth. You know, normally we have scheduled other meetings in June as end of year wrap-ups, but we didn't do that this year. So we will, uh, but we're gonna probably have the need for a special meeting. I would invite you to executive session, Tiger, Bill, Tucker. No one.
We can't hear anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
We, um, since, since we're muted, I will re- repeat what we said. We came out of executive session at ten twenty-seven, and, um, I mistakenly said that we would not vote, um, coming out of executive session. But we are gonna vote. Um, uh, the real estate transaction that's been under negotiation continues, um, with respect to an operator for the movie theater. Uh, the Board of Selectmen had previously recommended to the Board of Finance and the Town Council an allocation of ARPA funds for one million dollars. We're gonna change that recommendation to reduce it to six hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds. And correspondingly, we're gonna recommend to the Board of Finance and to the Town Council that they increase the cap, bonding authorizations um, from six hundred thousand dollars to one million. And, um, the rationale there is that we, uh, we don't wanna build up a big capital reserve. Um, when, once we put the money into the building initially, um, we're not gonna have to put any money into the building for the first ten years, probably well into the second ten years of the proposed lease. And, uh, so, um, the Board of Finance, um, will take that recommendation tonight at their meeting. And, uh, so I would make the motion to reduce the recommendation on ARPA from one million to six hundred and increase the bond authorization from six hundred to one million. Second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we will adjourn at ten twenty-nine. All in favor?
Aye, second.
Thank you.